Go ahead and get started. Please add your moment of prayer.
Father, thank you for the beautiful day you've given us. Lord, you're so good to us and so merciful and you bless us in more ways than we ever can. Lord, thank you for this time tonight. Lord, we pray for wisdom and guidance and knowledge as we need to discuss the finances and the business of the city of Wrightsville. We're thankful for where we live and the community in which we live. We're thankful for our employees. We're thankful for our citizens in our town. Lord, we just pray you continue to watch over and care for each one of us. You seem to be asking your name.
Everybody will address the flag, pledge allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, what I would like to do is take that just a minute of your time to give you not only thanks for helping us in years past, but ask for your assistance again this year. And we've been kicking off our Toys for Tots fundraiser the last Saturday of August up here at Hilltop. It's a scorcher and it's a little early, but I'd like to move it up and it's not a good weekend either for us, but for anyone else, Labor Day weekend on the Saturday the third, because we go nonstop from when we open until two days before Christmas. And last year, you assisted in helping us to help 887 needy children in the county council. And that we thank not only you as a council for allowing us to meet up there, but for each one here that probably has donated and will donate.
I don't know many council today. We normally refer to the police chief for working out some of the details with some of the red blocks in that council.
Okay, so I'll just...
Go ahead.
No, that's good. I'm good with it.
Okay. I will be in and talk with and no crime to that every day. All right. We thank you.
We appreciate the job you do.
Well, we thank you. It's tiring, but the joy is, is when you look in the face of the children, and that's what makes it worthwhile. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. A couple weeks ago, I was thinking about Memorial Day being patriotic and I remember about three years ago, Derek Austin came to the guys asking about to do a veterans memorial. So I hauled him, talked to him about the deal and stuff, and he was saying, yeah, I have five ones saved for my office. So we decided that we think that would be a good reification project. There's the picture that what gets folks to live life. There's a wood star marker that's on the end of that, and I just became aware of that last week or last week. The garden club ladies were talking about this, and this came about in World War II to honor the veterans from World War II. And so we would like to put one of those babies in with the garden club ladies assistance for them to fix the memorial for that. I had been trying to raise some money, got some money raised to help pay for the wood star marker. Also, we've got Woodman Life is already filed, they're going to do the lighting. Steve Livingston's thing to live better, going to buy our five flag clothes. Kirkpatrick is delivering concrete and mortar, and Johnson and Lumber is going to do the wall. The laser will be provided by Derek Austin and his father. Now, our prize will be the markers, bronze markers that you see, the round military markers. So we've got some funds in the reification account. We've got another project we wanted to do with the police department to revamp the front of that, add some flower roots, do some things. So we didn't want to deplete all of the money. So I was wondering if the CD could maybe, you know, put some money, maybe $3,000, $500 or, you know, $3,500 for helping us complete this project.
I don't know why I didn't think about this when I was talking to you, but AMRB grants, I believe, are due July 1st, and I might be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure. And I could not write a grant for Imagination Library this year because we've received the grant for two years. So you and me can get together and we can get possibly up to $5,000. It's from one to five. But then also, we can ask, we did it with the tornado memorial, we can ask them if they'll do the bookkeeping and anybody that donates funds is taxed for fundable.
No, I've got, there's several businesses in town that I've talked to. I've been getting some commitments. Some people haven't told me how much. Everybody on the way?
That's good.
I forewarned the CD helping out with this right here. Well, we had our freedom fest meeting over our budget and everything, and we've got some, we're under budget. And so I talked to them about it today, and they said that they would be willing to go like $1,500 into, to help out with this, with this project. So...
Well, that's what I said, we've got everything covered except those four markers. And those five markers, they can count up to $16,000 space for that. I've got somebody checking to see if we might get those cheaper, but, you know, hey, if we have enough in the bus, you know, we can always get it back to the eyes of, you know...
Do we have their...
You know, we have several projects going on, we've got two right now. And I just met the garden club ladies over at the police department, and we're going to revamp that and do some stuff, and so y'all would consider that. We can be on our way.
Miss Giffey, I wrote down my agenda. I'm going to ask a lot, $2,000 from the reification committee, $1,500.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Chair?
It'll take you to walk.
They may ram.
Oh, my goodness. Well, you know, here we are. We are 11 days away from the Wrightsville Freedom Room. And right now, we, last year, we had 625. We are approaching 700 today. Just got some in a little while ago. I'm over in Huntsville, and so anyway, it's going extremely well. We think that probably this year we'll have, I would say, I think we're going to have 800, we'll have 1,000. This is going to be, oh, my goodness, it's going to be extremely crazy and stressful. But I, again, I cannot tell you all how much I appreciate y'all's support. I had been, I actually was in Birmingham last week meeting with a group down there that do runs, and I asked them, I said, how many did y'all have y'all run last year? And they said, well, we kind of hate to tell you. And I said, well, how many? And they said, 40. And I said, oh, my goodness. So anyway, but, but we talked about the fact of community support, and that is extremely important. And I do appreciate, you know, y'all's support. Mayor and the council gives us, and we get from our police department, fire department, street department, just everyone, I mean, you know, it really makes the city, it's a big, big deal. And we've got runners right now, you know, from 150 mile radius coming in. We've actually got some coming from Spartanburg, South Carolina, Jackson, Florida. It's just, it's amazing to me, the distance of people that come in, you know, for cause of this run. But, and of course, this year, you know, we normally, the profits will run, you know, we give to different charities in our communities, and we're doing that to some degree this time, but the bulk of the money is going to Savannah Willingham to help her with the needs that she has. And so what I'd like to do, well, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I'd like to get a picture. You know, I'm all about pictures.
I wasn't going to use this opportunity to make a joke about repaying George Wallace, but I didn't know if it would be timed.
Well, I'm glad, I have a question. If we're not expecting these streets being made, that's what's going to be right on the line. Oh, my goodness.
We appreciate what you're doing. You're always out promoting the event and on social media and local television stations, and we really appreciate all that you do to bring people into our town.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, David. All right, so can we, can we get a picture or do we need to wait till after? Y'all want to wait till after the meeting is finished? Are you meeting or what do you...
You may want to get it now. Okay, let's do it.
You can take your picture. Hold the shirt around here. This is a gray shirt, Team Savannah. All right, let's all squeeze in right here. Camera break.
Is it safety, safety side?
And I know some of y'all have asked about holes I want to leave, one right here, and y'all can bring my personal center or mail them, call me off the mic. I always find, okay, I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you today. I'll get right to my point tonight. In viewing many of the videos that have city council meetings on YouTube, on the internet, it's become apparent that we seem to have a serious problem in our power city business if we don't do it. Over and over in video after video, it's clearly evident that decisions are being made by our council members behind closed doors. Then with decisions already made prior to any open meeting, they're presented in the form of a motion by one member, immediately seconded by another member, then voting in unison, whatever was previously decided on its path with a majority vote. Unfortunately, it appears that most of our city's business is decided without the knowledge or participation of our mayor. And Alabama, a law exists that is referred to as the Sunshine Law or the Opens Meeting, Opens Meeting Law to prevent exactly this behavior from happening. I have some handouts for you. I received a phone call last Friday night from Gerald Grant. He explained to me that you, you've all had training and you're aware of what this law is about and this Opens Meetings Law. And on the form I filled out for the agenda, it says that you need 10 copies. Is that two copies for each of y'all? Is that what that 10 comprises, or can you just need one copy? Okay. I need a copy of this. And if any of you in the audience would like a copy of this, of what I handed out to them, I'll pass this around. And if you'd like one, you can take it, just pass it around to each other. Okay. What I'd like to do is read this notice, which is on the first page you've got here. It was printed by the Fort Payne Times Journal Newspaper on the June 7th of this year to explain this law to those who may not be aware of this existence. Access and Open Meetings. Here are a few key provisions with Alabama's Opens Meetings Act to help the public hold their public bodies more accountable. Notice, no meeting, even an emergency meeting can properly be held without proper notice. Seven-day notice is required at all pre-arranged meetings. One-day notice is required to spin public comments or to deliver a matter of expectation to come into the body at a later time. Notice is required to include date, time, place, and agenda. Okay, on the second page that I gave you, there's a lot of places on the internet you can go and get different wording on this, but of all the ones I was looking at, this seemed to be the simplest and easiest to understand, and that's why I printed this particular one out. If a governmental body violates the Alabama Opens Meetings Act, any citizen of Alabama, media organization, or the Alabama Attorney General may file complaints. A preliminary hearing on the complaint file will be held no later than 10 business days after the date that the defendant's files an initial response to the complaint. If the defendant does not file an initial response, the hearing will be no later than 17 business days after the filing of the complaint. If the court moves against the public body, it has the right to enforce personal fines on members of the body of up to $1,000 or half a month's salary, whichever is less, for each violation of the act. The government body is authorized but not required to pay the legal fees of individuals who violate the act. The code also establishes that any action against the public body must be made within 60 days of the realization of violation of the law and within two years of the actual violation. Although after viewing videos of all of meetings during this administration, going over minutes of these meetings and finding many, many examples of this law obviously being violated, in the interest of time, I will only present two examples at tonight's meeting. On April 15th, 2015, a special meeting was called for the purpose of hiring city clerk Kelly Frazier. Clearly, in the video, the mayor was totally unaware of what was going on. Apparently, behind closed doors, the council had decided to hire Kelly Frazier. The mayor was not notified of the date, time, or place of the interviews for this petition. This was done solely by city council members who voted her in. The mayor clearly stated that he was voting against the process of the way this was handled rather than against the applicant. Now, some questions were asked. Now, I looked at this video, I watched it three times today.
Ms. Bittman?
Yes.
If you can hurry up, you're past your five minutes.
Okay. Roger, let me ask you, when and where were you this meeting and do conducted the interviews for applicant for a new city clerk?
Everybody had the opportunity. We had the applications, so everybody had the opportunity to get with them and interview.
Well, my question was, when and where were you meeting held to hold the interviews?
When and where? They were held at the Agri Center, same place we always hold all of our meetings at that time.
Okay, so this was, you got an open meeting because there's no...
No, let me stop. We scheduled those on our own, and we did meet in small groups, which is perfectly legal, and interviewed each one of the candidates. I know that myself and Roger interviewed multiple candidates on the same day in this room, and we set them up staggered time so we could go through all the candidates and give them equal opportunity to be interviewed.
How many candidates were there?
I don't remember, but can you go through your next example? You're past your five minutes.
No, I'm not through this example yet.
Well, Ms. Bittman, you signed this paper saying that you keep your comments to five minutes. You are now over your five minutes. We do have other pressing business to take care of. We do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, but please be brief in your comments.
Okay, well, as soon as you quit talking, I can get it. I want to know why the mayor was not notified of these interviews, because if you had these small groups and small meetings and they weren't open to the public, then they were illegal. These meetings are unlawful to be held in this manner.
Ms. Bittman, thank you for your time. We do have other stuff to go on to. If you can, from now on, please keep your comments to five minutes' time.
Okay, so you don't want to hear my other example?
Well, ma'am, you have five minutes left for speaking position.
Okay, well, five minutes is long enough on this, but I will see you at the next city council meeting.
At the last meeting, we had a presentation from Mr. Ray Campbell of Aaronoff. The possibility of signing, Campbell, his son is their agents, their insurance agents in dealing with him. He had, I think he's probably a few of you guys, and basically what they'd like to do in the trial run with us for a year period, discounted rate of $10,000, and that will run through February, which is when our, with our three-year deal with Hammick runs out. I'd like to look forward to that.
Was this a percentage of our, percentage of our co-payments?
No, it was not. We, we just picked what we thought was probably, based on prior experience, what we thought it would take in man hours to do this, because it wasn't about property, it was about showing you a process as a, as a council. And so it wasn't really anything about how much money. And in this case, I think that we were able to come up with a significant amount of property that we're not covering under the policies to the tune of several hundred thousand, even more into a meeting or something. And that was a fee for this one policy due that would occur at the end of 16, '17. This was all for the council. I can't remember the exact date. I just read the article in the, in the paper for Fort Payne two months ago or so, and we proceeded forward on that after the council agreed for us to blue building. And so that was that. And the second aspect of it was to show the worth of having an agent as such represent you or any other town for that matter, because Hammick is an insurance company, but they're not an insurance agent. And the validity of, first of all, they just simply take the information you give them and then do hard work and come up with a premium. So they don't really verify anything, or they don't substantiate anything. And that's where we come in. We, we don't care whether it's Hammick or Travelers or CNA or whomever, we're just interested in making sure that this council and the mayor take their, do share responsibilities to cover all the property that's out there available. And it's a massive undertaking when you go building to building and you go into all the aspects of trying to run all this property down. Police cars, fire trucks, buildings, contingency buildings, constructional buildings. It goes on and on, and it takes a lot of hours and we basically just came up with a fee on that basis. But our ultimate goal was just to prove our worth so that we can be your agent to move forward in a couple of years and possibly go to other companies to create a competitive environment so that you weren't just stuck with Hammick. Nothing wrong with Hammick, they're great companies, but they're not the only company. And they just sort of got a lot in this state on the insurance business, because when they first got started doing municipalities, they were only gang attack, but since then that has changed. Another major carrier have an interest in this type of business. So this fee was a one-time thing for this policy, year 16 and 17. We can be your agent to represent you, get these changes identified, or get these needs identified, and get with Kelly, which my son intends to do next week, all these pieces of property that aren't on the policy as we sit here tonight to get that done. The second thing was that we'd receive a letter where you appoint us as your agent. Now, if you do that, this council, this council, I mean, this is not a lifetime deal. You can change it just by simply saying, we enjoy what you've done, thank you for your help, and I'd be always, it's just like you would do with Chris Sky, with all of the brooch homeowners or anybody else. You're just the agent as long as you want us to be that agent, just, just out of permanent like any other. So we do feel like you need an agent. We feel like we need us out of state needs an agent, because you're not trained in insurance, you're not supposed to be. You're trained to do what's in the city's best interest in hiring appropriate people where you need them, whether it's the city attorney, whether it's an architect, whether it's the CPA, all of those folks have functions they perform for the city because they're needed. And ours is just another function. And this one-time fee does fall under the city of Wrightsville, but subsequent commissions would be paid by having to us, and you wouldn't have any way to add as far as any other.
Would the additional commissions paid to Hammick to you, would that represent a higher payment to us?
We feel like no, for this reason. We feel like once we're in the game, they become a little more competitive because they know we're not working for Hammick or any... You will initially give an increase about what we found because of so much property not currently listed on policy. We can't help that. But as far as will it cost you more to have us, our experience has taught us that over a period of time, we're probably going to save you money with our commission included.
Mr. Campbell, 8% is the standard, industry standard as far as commission for your work contract.
We were far below that.
Sure, sure. But 8% on what we've paid now is $16,000. General liability workman's comp, we pay around $200,000 a year in premiums. So $10,000 is of course for a trial run that ends in February.
Well, we'd call us a trial, but we actually did it in the form of a service that we agreed to.
But it's held, it's held in this year.
Now, what, what do you do in far as the workman's comp?
We have to look at that too. We, we just work, period. It doesn't matter what...
What are our insurance payments without workman's comp? Yeah, what do we pay?
Premiums. $150,000 to $155,000.
I think the total package is somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000.
And that includes workman's comp?
We have as well as the work comp.
Well, we've been, we've been looking at the $200,000 package. As far as the item, $200,000, like, you see, definitely.
But we, we, we're, we're liable for all of that, that's just not true. We came in, we came in on the package to try to establish or to make sure that your coverages were sufficient and that your, that your property was covered.
I'm curious as to what 8% of our property coverage is, not what 8% of our, minus our workman's comp.
Well, let's assume for a moment that 8%, that, that's a pretty $200,000, we'd be talking about $16,000.
So the $150,000, that's just our property insurance?
And what, and general liability? And, and what, and, and general liability? Does that include workman's comp?
It does not. It works off the separate.
It's not, it's not include workman's comp, but everything we pay insurance, absent health insurance for the employees, is in, is the two hundred thousand dollar, um, budget item.
So, it's a significant budget item to save lease. And you want to save money where you can, but it's important in saving money, you want to make sure that your property is covered if you have another tornado, or a, a fire generally won't hurt you too much, if you was specific to one building or one area. But tornado, as was the case last time, it came through and, uh, and hit the, uh, civic center, or I'm not sure you call it that, but, uh, you know, there was, the coverages on that building were, were not significant enough to pay for the damage, and I, I understand, I, I don't know this for sure, but you, you do, I'm sure, that money had to be raised through bondage to, uh, finish repairing, is that right or wrong?
Uh, they did upgrades. The Board of Education went above and beyond.
Okay.
There was nothing to us to place it at.
The insurance was, apparently, it was just upgrades with Board of Education.
Got you. So, anyway, we, we have looked at all of that too, and, uh, and we've made some recommendations of, of, uh, all kind of buildings are looked at differently. You, you have a concrete structure, it will carry wind rates, you have a metal steel joist, it will carry another, a non-combustible another, a frame building another. And, uh, all of those rates will vary, because, uh, uh, you know, windstorm, certain type construction can stand up better, and a fire, certain type of structure can stand up better. So, your rates are based off of those things, and we go in each building, or did go in each building, and the stack, the stack is way up, and that's how you come up with it together to work.
Any more questions?
I have a question. Uh, if I remember correctly, last name is Campbell, the, the numbers and the coverage that you're citing up does include those buildings that are owned by industrial development Board?
I believe that's correct, sir.
That's what I remember. So, what we're talking about now does include those buildings, does it include them, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anti-exempt.
Anti-exempt.
Ag buildings.
They were all at least.
Right.
Well, I'll read and ask about the ones that we're responsible for, because we're collecting lease money on those. I just want to make sure it wasn't included, because it's a little bit of a situation.
We, we took any building, any building that the city had a participation in, and we put it in the.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make it clear at night.
Here's quite an undertaking. You think of Rangel as a small place, do you start driving around looking for buildings? It's not so small. I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize there was a water plant on there, I didn't realize there was, uh, a ring out here, I mean, they're not on the road, but once you start driving around, it's, it's pretty extensive. I knew where the library was, because I've been in there and bought some neat expensive books. At my age, you still enjoy reading, not just your computer.
Okay, it's, uh, it's five thirty, we'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting to order. Graham, Fred, Holt here, let their.
Here.
Freeman, here, to linger about.
Here.
So, a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented by the city clerk in dispensable rating thereof.
Second. Motion by Graham to approve the minutes as presented, second by Holt, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's, uh, I've got two letters here, um, one to, um, assign, uh, authorize me to assign, uh, Mr. Campbell and Aaronoff as our agency records and representative to deal with Hammick, one is for the, uh, Hammick and others for the workman's compensation fund, uh, and then also their, uh, one-time, uh, ten thousand dollar fee for services, and that's through, uh, February of seventeen. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
And a motion by Holt, uh, second by Freeman, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I've got a very simple, uh, legal services contract for city attorney, Nikki Scott, in full pain, uh, hundred fifty dollars an hour, um, that's pretty well the only stipulation on that agreement.
Make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Graham to accept the contract, section by whether, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we've got upcoming a public participation meeting for the ongoing comprehensive city plan, um, and also I think that you maybe, uh, just to quit, put down a demolition grant, and thankfully Lucas Lankship has joined us tonight, and, um, I guess I would let you run through that, Lucas, if you want to.
Sure, my own means. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to start first with the comp plan?
Sure.
Basically, the next step that we need to portage on the comp plan contract is holding a public participation meeting. And, uh, at your whim, I would like to kind of gauge you guys about when you would like to do that, and, uh, kind of the timeframe for public notice, and how you would like to advertise for that.
I think August would be a better one, if we'd like to.
I work at your whim, so I'm, I'm.
That's good for me, too, because that helps.
Uh, that's going to put us off track, and that's going, the latest line for three months.
I need to include, um, through the second weekend July, so if it's after the second weekend July, I can just meet things.
And with schools starting back on August the fourth, most people will have their vacations over with, so you'd probably have a greater participation from the public. Okay. Uh, the only thing I would mention at that, if we do delay it, I may have to ask for an extension from that nation regional commission on the project, since we are putting a little bit of lag in that.
I don't, I'm not opposed to you having it sooner, I just cannot participate. Like, for a second or third weekend July, you're just in the job responsibility, so if you want to plan it some other time, I just can't participate.
Well, I work at the city council's whim, and.
I don't want you to get behind on asking for an extension, so when, when are you thinking it's a better time?
Uh, I would like to have that, uh, sooner rather than later, if it was up to me, but like I said, I work for you guys, so.
We're having, you know, by the end of this month, I keep it a little trash. I would say, if you, if you can get that with working your schedule, I'm not opposed to that, but I'll, I'll, I'll be.
Um, depending the direction that you guys would like to take, we can schedule a sit-down meeting with you to take your information and run things by you to keep your input, if it's left for that round. Prior to or after.
So, June, June just might not work, not for a month, I'm here one day.
I'm good, I think there's like three days and a half or weeks that I won't be able to. But, uh, I'm good.
What about? We're fairly flexible, rather, we're just on a regular weekend.
Well, you know, I'm here if I need to be.
If I need.
But if we're going to have barbecue or something.
That would help us right now.
Sure.
It would probably be best if you just pick a suitable date for your schedule and.
We're trying to.
Go get it.
As long as we're on the same page, that's the main thing, so.
Devolution grant, that, that's kind of the.
My understanding is this, uh, at this time, we have approximately eight hundred people that have shown interest in the project, is that correct?
Twenty-two, and we've got three that's interested, we're just running them down and get their, get them to come home, and that's the last of that.
In a nutshell, the ADECA community development grant grants are due on July first at twelve noon, that's the absolute drop dead date on that. In order for us to move forward with this project, we will have to pass a resolution for application that will have to come through to the council and the mayor. We will have to allocate match funding, which is typically twenty percent of the project's total, go along with that. And then, since this is a, a unique project, it's a removal of slum and blight, demolition project for derailed, dilapidated buildings, we'll just have to do a designation, which will bullet point basically all the buildings that we're looking at at this time.
So, I guess we need to get with our city accountant, make sure that we have the funds for, for the next meeting.
Once we get the estimate back, if I had, yeah, um, if not going to be money allocated, uh, sufficient money allocated to do the twenty-five properties, then, uh, we're going to have to trim the estimate. I, you know, there's been a lot of labor done here, and, uh, we'd like to obviously apply and go through with it. Uh, we, I want to get as many as we can, if we can't do the twenty-five, then, um, I think, take a harder look at the list and, and, based on the need, we'll trim it down.
I would say there's lots of different things, like you asked mentioning, we'd be giving a ballpark on what the estimate will be, with all the number of, uh, buildings that they're looking at, establishing that, and then moving forward from that one.
No, there's no hospital labels that you say fifty thousand.
I'm not a demolition expert by any means.
Well, the parameters of the grant, they were capped at two fifty.
The parameters of the grant are capped at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the community enhancement fund, which typically fits demolition-type projects, so twenty percent of two hundred and fifty thousand would be a fifty thousand dollar max, so you would look at a total project of three hundred thousand dollars. That's probably your high end of this. I don't expect to give that comment, to be perfectly frank. Well, Latin environmental should have those numbers any time now.
Those demolition include, if we, yes, in the bills, yes, that's pretty significant.
Right, um, my understanding from my past experience working these type projects, you would, uh, crush the septic tanks, fill those in, remove everything, um, I like to be very inculcious in doing this, so we'll have hazardous materials reviewed prior to that.
So, I think the last question, what about the environmental impact, is that all completed at this?
We have to go through the DIBA process prior to anything we're taking down, so, uh, yes, definitely hazardous materials will be taken into account for, lead paint, hazardous etc., etc., citizen represses.
So, anyway, that's one of his, like, I said, perhaps, you know, just like checking the building.
This has been approximately, uh, eight years ago, I did a similar project for a city in Marion County, Alabama, where we took down approximately thirty homes, and it was right around two hundred and fifty thousand dollar building.
Do you have anything?
Thank you very much, guys, and if there's anything I can help you with, follow me anytime.
Finally, we got, uh, the two out of the personnel, we got a, uh, full-time patrolman hired, Dean White, a full-time fireman, uh, hire Matthew Clark Cooley, and then the chief would like to, uh, post his second investigator position internally, hopefully build that some, that's, um, internally, because I'm going to hire him.
I'll make a motion to hire Dean White, at the starting pay rate for the family, full-time department.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, on favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to hire Matthew Clark Cooley at starting, is that correct? Starting full-time firefighter.
I second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to the opposed investigator, investigator position internally.
I second that. Motion by Freeman, second by Holt, on favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, just want to talk a little bit about the Freedom Fest, of course, Jerry was here about the Freedom Fest run, uh, and he does, he does a great job with that run, uh, raises a lot of money for different needs in the community. Uh, the Freedom Fest is coming up, the twenty-fifth, here in the park, um, we have got a full slate of entertainment, starting at, uh, one o'clock all the way to nine o'clock that night for the fireworks, um, you may have seen some of the, some of the, uh, rochers or, you know, posters, uh, we've got the pummy rides back, uh, inflatables, uh, we have a magician coming back to do shows in the Tom Bell Center, um, the whole cricket team, this is the first year they've been able to come back and, and, and perform, and they're going to do two shows in the, uh, Tom Bell Center too. So, it's, it's a, it's a full slate, uh, starting at, at, at about one o'clock that day, all the way to after the fireworks that night, so hope everybody can come out and, uh, and enjoy that, so. Okay, uh, in the, in the fire department, uh, they've got a computer, uh, desktop computer that is, uh, is totally worked bad, and, uh, they've got an estimate on getting a new one for them, and it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, and I'll put that in the form of a motion to let them purchase that computer.
I second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, they have a second computer up there that they've been using, but it's having trouble because it quits ever so often, and they think it's just the power supply, uh, they want to go ahead and get it, you know, worked on while the genesis is going to be there, so I'm going to put that in form of a motion to let them go ahead and get that one repaired too. Don't have a cost on it, uh, probably, if it's a power supply, it's probably not going to be very expensive, maybe a hundred dollars, so I'll put that in form of a motion.
I second you. Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Freeman, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I don't know exactly, I can't remember exactly the date, but going back about, probably in the fall, or maybe a little, little bit earlier in, in the summer last year, uh, we put in for a grant to, uh, to get a new fire truck, and, um, the chassis has came in, it's, it's there at, uh, you know, having, uh, you know, the vehicle on it, so that is underway, uh, we should be receiving that new fire truck, uh, somewhere along, uh, sometime in July, probably July, July or August. So, uh, that just adds another truck to our fleet at the fire department, which is in really good shape, they, they do a good job over there, and, uh, so that truck will be coming in full time. Now, here's, here's something to be kind of thinking about on this, is that truck's got to be equipped with all the different parts, hoses, uh, nozzles, uh, axes, everything has got to go in that truck, and we've got three firemen sitting back there, and they know what I'm talking about. Um, and I, I talked to Thomas about this other day, and he said that he thought, um, probably between thirty and, something around thirty of forty thousand dollars to afford that truck, is how much it costs. Does that sound about right? One, I mean, with.
Um, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not sure on total cost and all the equipment that'll go on it, but if that's what he said, he'd get it.
They, they, they know pretty much, so somewhere probably between thirty and forty. So, anyway, uh, just going to get you updated on that, and, um, that's all I have.
I have the, we're involved in new roll-off truck, that left us a total of three, and we've got one out of shot, and I'm going to make us, before we can surplus this and get rid of it, we'll carry this to the doctor, as he's busy with this. So, I want to make form of a motion that we surplus the ninety-four, max six hundred, and let the mayor authorize and sponsor, resolution zero six zero six twenty sixteen.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman to pass an adopted stated resolution, second by Ledbetter, is there any discussion?
Um, only that it's not about the break, it's in fine operating condition, it's a good value for any.
Shut up, you're a.
So, all right.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Um, I have, I make a motion to pass resolution six six sixteen, this is a resolution providing for the city's participation in the sales tax holiday, uh, we do this every year.
So, it would be a different, a year cycle?
I bet mine was. I bet mine was the first. A six, I make a motion to pass resolution six six sixteen A for the, to participate in the sales tax holiday.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that the city enter into contract with Andrew Hairston for the Public Defender Position.
I second that motion. Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We had brought up with City Hall and the side doors being locked and the security issues. I spoke to a few people from, that work in City Hall every day, and Tammy had said that she had wanted her office specifically on that side so that the traffic could just be limited to her side. And that she definitely understood, especially with us not having JCS anymore, that everybody's coming to City Hall. And they're paying their court funds. So there are a few options. Roger had come up with a few, and I'll let him talk about those in a second. But something that Tammy and I had talked about, and Kelly and I had also talked about, is possibly leaving Tammy's side open and maybe doing something with Kelly's side to just have an employee entry on that side. Not necessarily lock it, maybe just get fire signs to do a nice vinyl lettering on there. And then that way, it, you know, cuts down a little bit of the security issues and fears. One thing that I do want to make a motion for, and I'll do it after this discussion, is the buzzers are not fully working in City Hall. So I know that Tammy said she doesn't know when people enter in on her side, and Kelly said hers works half the time. So I am going to make a motion that we get those looked at and fixed. But Roger, do you want to?
I checked on the doors, and that being, those are exit doors, and for us to be able to lock them, we're going to have to equip them with pushbars for safety, because they are exits. They do open to the outside. They are exit doors, and if something was to happen, there are so many feet down a hallway. So they would have to be equipped. Now, I got a price on those. They're around to fix them before they will lock and be able to, when they're locked, be able to push, and they open, is about $350 a door. Now, that would comply with, you know, safety, you know, where if there was a fire or something, somebody get out of it even though it's locked, you just bump it, and those are all that. The other fault was, you know, if it's, if we're going to leave it open, you know, we might want to have some kind of security. Most, you know, like bigger towns have security or, you know, just, or they make everybody go through some kind of metal detectors or whatever. And with our court being back there, see, before, we didn't have this because JCS took care of the court. Well, now, everybody's coming to see Tammy there to cause that before they have to pay their fines. So it brings a lot more people into the City Hall building than it used to. Another thing we talked about in the last meeting was, you know, handicap accessible, okay? We could, in the front there, we could put three parking spaces and make it handicap accessible into the front to make it easier for people to get in there. We could cut, we could cut a notch out spot there and make it that way. So there's other options, you know, security guard, putting some parking spaces out front. But if we do lock those doors, we are going to have to push, put pushbars on, you know, where they're open. So that's just the thing that I found out today, or over the last few days, that, you know, since we had that last meeting, that we need to be looking into. So I just kind of gave you an update of the whole view of it, so.
Yeah, with a question. When you were checking, we're locking all those doors, like we talked about in the last meeting, and short of doing something like parking spaces in front, are we not out of compliance with ADA, back, federal, or American system?
I don't believe so. I think there's a ramp going up. There is a designated handicap spot.
Well, the point was raised last week about the distance, not so much the length, but the distance those handicap folks would have to walk.
I don't know if there is a.
It might be so if you want to check them.
Yeah, I didn't check into that side. That one, why I got to talk about that, I decided to go look about the front. If there was some way we can make it handicap accessible. And that would make it walk closer.
Yes.
That was just the fault that I had, that, you know, that might be the best way to fix this. I can check on the distance.
I'll do that up there.
I'll check.
So I make a motion that we allow our city clerk to get someone at City Hall to look into why the buzzers are not working, because I think they're a magnetic sensor. And I don't expect this to be over 750, but I want to go ahead and make that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Justice.
I could ask about adopting the election workers, and after looking at the elections manual, it suggests that we do it a little closer to the election time, because qualifying hasn't even happened yet. I mean, to make sure that no election official is related to anyone voting the ballot. So I'm going to respectfully ask to delay that to our first meeting in August, which I think is August first. And next, we have three sealed bids for the loans, so if we could let me be opening those or ask the clerk to open those, and then when Joey finishes with that bid, or you want me to open them, or how does that work? Kelly, can you do that and take notes if you want me to do it? That's all I have until I.
I'm going to make a motion that we allocate $2,000 to the beautification committee to go towards the veterans memorial that we're erecting in the city park.
I'm taking that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. We have a potential job opening in the sanitation department. We may have an individual who may be retiring before the end of this month. I'd like to go ahead and post this job, I'd like to, the job, post a job for a Class B CDL sanitation truck driver.
I second that. Motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a estimate from TNT, paving, ceiling, and strapping for the Tom Beville parking lot. This is, this quote is for sixty-one hundred dollars. They're the same company that did the city parks. They did an excellent job down there. I make a motion that we authorize Tri-State to reseal the Tom Beville parking lot.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A hydraulic cylinder on our tractor at the wastewater treatment plant decided no longer wanted to work, so we had to have to vote it fixed. The amount that repaired was $799.87. I make a motion that we authorize the general, we have the sanitation fund, that we take this out of the sewer fund.
Motion by Graham, second, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. We have four streets that we had Mr. Sam Phillips look at for us. I'm going to, I'd like for us to go ahead and bid those streets out for resurfacing. Those streets are Shavey's Road, that would be from the Shavey's Church to the top of the mountain. Shallow Estates, RTI Drive, and Industrial Boulevard. The total cost of all resurfacing all these right here is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. I took the liberty of going and meeting with our accountant last Wednesday while she was here. And we have a special accounts fund that currently has $545,000 in there. I'd like for us to use 245,000 of that 545,000 to be paid towards the resurfacing of these streets. We have our seven cent and four cent gas tax fund. It's currently sitting at, right at 40,000. I would say that let's use 35,000 out of that fund to pay towards it. And our general fund right now is in a surplus area. We're sitting at over $200,000 in our general fund account, which is above and beyond what the general balance has been this time of year during fiscal year. So the remaining 30,000 I would ask to come out of the general fund. And I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Now, the 300,000 I was reminded of, 300,000 has a special account. The special account of the city is essentially the city's sales account. The reserve account is a rainy day account.
And I spoke to her, and she said that we're good as long as we keep, we're going, we're going to maintain that balance, we're going to maintain the 300,000.
And I know it's good because it's money that belongs to the city, it's the balance of that going way down. You still want to do that? Can you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
To bid, to submit or bid out the resurfacing of Shavey's Road, Shallow Estates, RTI Drive, and Industrial Boulevard.
Let me make a note that on these pavings, once the construction loan comes through and we get approval from John Vanderver through USDA, that money can be replenished into the special account. So I'm taking that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. During, I took the liberty of calling up, which is our new city attorney, Ms. Nick Skosh. She is very easily qualified for this decision. I asked her some of her experiences, what experience she has had in municipal law. And she currently serves as the city attorney for Geraldine. And two things that we're, all we want to be a city attorney for the most are two things that she's currently working with. They have a USDA project for their sewer system expansion that they're currently in their love. And she is working with them and getting them that moved through. With that, she's also specifically said that she works with David Ringelstein out of Birmingham, who is our attorney associated with the USDA loan. So there's already a good working relationship.
She actually graduated with him from law school, isn't she?
She has, had worked with him on many different occasions. And of course, I asked her, how did y'all handle the, Geraldine handled the construction law associated with it? And she said that Mr. Ringelstein had prepared them in awards, and they simply just passed the awards. And Mr. Ringelstein has done the same thing with us. So I'm going to revisit ordinance four eighteen sixteen P. This is the ordinance that was written by our bond attorney. And I'm going to make a motion that we pass and adopt ordinance four eighteen sixteen.
I second that.
Motion by Graham to pass and adopt a stated ordinance, or second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
It's like a roll call, sure. Graham?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Ledbetter?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Lingerfeld?
Yes.
I hope no. Motion to pass this ordinance or not.
Okay. Now, I also want to make a motion that for any money to be drawn down on this loan, it has to be presented to the city council, voted on, and passed by a majority vote.
I second that. Motion by Graham, second by Holm, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hope no. Motion carries.
Okay. I would like to make an announcement tonight. And while we're here, the tornado memorial is looking really good right now. And they have a fundraiser set up for September the 10th. It will be a bake sale, a car show, an auction, and music. It will be from four to eight. We would ask all who can to attend.
We'll announce more at the time we get the message.
And the last thing I have on my agenda is, I'm going to ask that we go into a quick executive session for preliminary negotiations in trade competition. This is for open discussion, would have detrimental impact on this body's negotiating position.
Someone do that, can they?
Oh, yeah.
We'll return that later.
Can I go?
Yes.
We had three banks to bid on the loans that we currently have. I make a motion that we, let me just say that First Bank of the South, First Southern State Bank, and Regions Bank all submitted a bid on the three loans that we were talking about. I make a motion that we move the fire truck loan to Regions Bank at a rate of 2.35 percent fixed.
I second that.
Motion by Holm, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Secondly, I make a motion, we move the note for the police cars to Regions Bank at a loan rate of 1.80 percent fixed.
I second that.
Motion by Holm, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And thirdly, I make a motion that we move the municipal annex building to First Southern State Bank at a 3.5 percent interest rate.
I second that.
Motion by Holm, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I saw it.
I've got two items that I need to, so. One, in the work session, we talked about the memorial that we're going to build. I'd like to make a motion to give $1,500 out of the Freedom Fest and the fund towards that.
I second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The other thing I have is probably just permission to bid on Carlisle Road. About a month ago, we went to Joey and I, and the mayor from Salania, the mayor from Hennepin, and Will Jackson from the county commission, went to Montgomery and went down there to see about some funding. And Carlisle Road was one of the ones that we had kind of on the radar, you know, we stayed headless. So that project is a $300,000 project from hilltop to our church. And Mr. Cooper from the Transportation Department was real good to us. He gave us, he gave us $150,000 towards that project. So we've got to bid it out, and, you know, to know exactly, we've got it, you know, just an estimate from our city engineer, Sam Bevill. But to get this project started, we'd have to go through the bid process. So I'm putting that out for y'all to discuss. I know we was talking about money just a few minutes ago. If we want to do this, that $150,000 is there perhaps. If we see that we can't do it, then I guess we just got to go. So it's up to y'all on that. I'll put it in the form of a motion, if y'all want to do it, if you don't, then we.
I second that.
I think this is an opportunity to resurface that street for 50 cents on the dollar. And also, this is an opportunity for our senator and our state representative to help out with the city of Raines. So I'd like to thank Representative Ledbetter and Senator Livingston for giving us the opportunity that we have today. One of the things that was very helpful is that we used that as a farm-to-market road, which enabled us to get this funding. So once again, to both Senator and Representative, all in my thanks.
The pavement on that particular road will lead from Salania Baptist all the way to Hilltop. We'll finish that road out all the way through Rainesville and Salania at the same time. So it's going to really fix that road good. So that's the reason I wanted to do that, and that was Salania's side of it too.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And if anybody has the opportunity of seeing Representative Ledbetter or Senator Livingston, take the time to shake their hand and tell them something. $150,000 just magically appearing to us is a wonderful thing. And it's good to have a state elected officials that work closely with the municipalities that they represent and listen to the needs of the municipalities.
Motion to pay the monthly bills?
I have a motion to pay the monthly bills.
Second. Motion by Ledbetter, second by Holden, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion that we go into an executive session for the previously stated reasons. It should last no longer than 10 to 15 minutes.
So we'll be back at six.
Great.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.